Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of West Windsor Township for April 12, 2023. This is our first meeting at 6:30, which is now the new standard meeting time of the Planning Board. And this is our first meeting back in Room A of the municipal building. It's good to be back here. I can't remember being here before. It seems that did that long. My name is Curtis Hoberman. I am the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. And with the absence of our Chair, Michael Karp, tonight, I will be leading tonight's proceedings. Please turn off or mute all your cellular devices. The microphones are live. They stay live. We don't need to share microphones. Each of us have one. You can ignore the red and blue buttons in front of you. And yesterday was a very special day in American history. It was Linda's birthday. And I'll just say this probably for myself, for anyone else. Tomorrow is a special day because it's Thomas Jefferson's birthday. And I knew that they as Founder's Day, April 13th, because I went to Mr. Jefferson's University, University of Virginia. That's where I studied architecture. This is to advise that the revised notice of the time, date, and location, and to the extent known agenda of the meeting, subject meeting, was prominently posted in the public place reserved for such or similar announcements on March 30, 2023, transmitted to the Times of Trenton, the Princeton Packet, and the West Windsor and Plainfield News on March 30, 2023, and filed with the Township Clerk on the same date, March 30. Could we have the roll call of the members, please?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Schichtel?
Here.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Beg? Ms. Bari? Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Jivers?
Yeah.
Mayor Morate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Here.
Chairman Karp?
Do we have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
A quorum has been established. We can actually transact business tonight. Yay. So this is pretty much a review meeting of a lot of different paperwork that has accumulated over time. We'll be reviewing and approving minutes. We'll be approving resolutions. We've got five resolutions there. And after the possibility of a public comment, Chairman's comment, and your comment, there will be an ordinance referral that we received from the Township Council regarding flood, plain, and management regulations. That's our agenda tonight. I'm going to try this, although I'm sure my effort will fail. I'd like to put the four meeting minutes on a consent agenda. But does anyone want to pull them at this time? For corrections? Their meetings are up January 25th.
Are we going to vote now?
February 1st, February 15th, March 1st. We would vote on them all as consent agenda unless people, unless members have corrections or otherwise. Linda, which one would you want to pull?
Correction, February 15.
Okay, just hold it for there. And does anyone have concerns about January 25th, February 1st, or March 1st?
March 1st. It's more along lines of typos here.
Okay, that's fine. So let's, can I have a, does anyone have comments on January 25th or February 1st? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of those two dates?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of February 1st and January 25th. I should have said it in the other order, 2023. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any, all those against us, say nay.
I have to abstain from the February 1st one because I wasn't here for January 25th.
Duly noted, Simon. Thank you very much. The motion has passed. We have approved the January 25th and February 1st minutes. The next section, set of minutes we're going to look at is February 15th. Linda, what would you like us to look at?
Under liaison reports, the, my report from the Affordable Housing Committee, the second paragraph there, the third line says Jean Jacobson. But it's Jean, J-E-A-N. It should be not Jean.
As in former Chair.
That and also on the next page, page three, towards the middle, where it mentions four people's names, Kristen Applegate. It's K-R-I-S-T-I-N, Kristen Applegate, not you.
Noted.
I just realized I was not here for the February 1st. Still have to abstain.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Mr. Schichtel abstains from the February 1st approval of those minutes. He was not present at that meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Rob, you're missing it. You're getting a little sharp. Thank you. Okay. Any other corrections to the February 15th minutes? Can I have a motion to approve with corrections?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Linda, seconded by Simon, to approve with corrections the meeting minutes of February 15th. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against, say nay. The approval of the February 15th meeting minutes has occurred. The next meeting minutes we're looking at is March 1st. Are there corrections to these minutes?
I saw one on page two. It says Allison Miller. Allison's first name should be spelled A-L-I-S-O-N. It's just the way it's spelled as well. I knew you would appreciate that I caught that.
Are there any other corrections to the March 1st meeting minutes? Motion for approval, please? Alan's made the motion a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Alan, seconded by Simon, to approve with corrections the March 1st meeting minutes of the Planning Board. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against, say nay. Motion has passed. The meeting minutes have been approved. The next set, next items, we will now be going to resolutions, A through E. The first two resolutions are procedural guidelines and location, time of board meetings for the remainder of 2023. Besides, Sam, besides the time correction with the 6:30 PM start of meetings, are there any other corrections to these from what we saw back in January?
There was a, there was a reference to a 10:30 stop date, and I changed that to 9:30.
Back an hour, okay.
But you have it down as 10 PM, and it should say 9:30.
And the revised ones that were sent out should have that correction on 9:30 on there.
And below that, we have it at 7 o'clock.
That's, yeah.
There was a revised one I sent out that has all that highlighted in bold.
So Lisa did send out revised guidelines, and I think, and she made both of those time changes, correct, Sam?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the addition that we're actually going to approve tonight. Oh, but Sam, in terms beyond that, are there any other information changes in here that were different than when we looked at this document in January?
No other changes other than time and location.
Is there any other discussion items of the board on this, on the document of the resolution?
No, but what I'd like to say, I guess, is that our actual meeting notice, right, the statement of adequate notice, roll call, and it's all that, all that that's in here. I think we should kind of follow that according to our guidelines. Like if you look at tonight's agenda, it doesn't mention public comment.
Well, yes, it does.
Well.
It's sort of, it's just a setup to the right.
Sort of.
Yeah.
Chairman's comments and correspondence, then, you know, it should just be the blank and under that public comment because that's the way it is in our, I guess you call, procedural guidelines here. So I'm just saying, if you look at this, then people might not catch that. Chairman's comments and correspondence, I guess, is really, any letters or notices, something that the Chairman would get or Chairman's comments, you know, kind of like what he made at the beginning of the meeting. But I think that public comment, and then it says public comment on non-agenda items, should go across from public comment, right?
Yeah, I would agree with John that point.
Yeah, I don't want people to think we're not taking any public comment.
They have to read it across, but normally it will be easier just to have it isolated as a bullet point.
Right. And then, and we, as a general rule, we don't, like, we have ordinance referrals from Township Council, but it doesn't mention public comment there. So I don't know if we all think that the public assumes that they could comment on that at the time we discuss that. Like, we do it here, and we always have a hearing, and then just public comment.
Whether it's listed or not, Ms. Land use law requires the public's ability to speak. So whether we have it on the agenda or not. I'm sorry. Yeah. How about now?
That's better.
Whether it's on the agenda or not, the Ms. Land use law requires the public's ability to speak. So it's just putting where on the agenda we would allow that to happen.
But it's always been, Sam, at the beginning of the meeting, where it's most.
And it is.
It used to be at the very end, just before closed session, and was moved up beginning of this year up to where it was after minutes resolution and liaison reports, when we do have liaison reports.
Just a little clarification. The municipal land use law requires, gives, requires that the public be given an opportunity to make comments and ask questions at any hearing. That is, a hearing on an application, on the master plan, and on any proposed designation of an area in need of redevelopment. But if, other than that, there's no requirement that the public be allowed to participate, but they can if we choose, so choose, and we always do that. It just, the Open Public Means Act requires that they can be present. That they can be present outside the hearing context. Open Public Means Act requires that the public be allowed to be present, but they don't, it doesn't require that they be given an opportunity to be heard, but we do that as matter of course.
Well, yeah, and we do have that as part of the procedural guidelines, which is, I guess, would be page, page two. So I'm just saying, with agenda, let's just be consistent for meeting and meeting and have that public comment. I guess that would come after Chairman's comments and correspondence.
As it does now.
But, well, yeah, it does.
Which is D and E.
Public comment is, is not, is not on this agenda. And what else? We should be following what our procedural guidelines say. And if our practice has been a little bit different, then we need to change procedural guidelines. That's what the purpose of this is.
So what you're saying is after number five, you want a new number six that specifically in bold has public comments, and then number seven would say applications or whatever.
Yeah, I'll just re-put this, this gets confusing. You have the call to order, statement of adequate notice. We did that roll call, we did that. Comments by the presiding, presiding officer. Okay, so that would come next, then review of correspondence. Okay, that's part of it. Public comment would then come.
Yeah.
You know, and then you get, and then you get to the minutes, the resolutions, and whatever else we're discussing that night. You know, and the office puts it together, and so just follow this.
So my gut feeling, my gut feeling, Linda, is that when we, with the nature of the Bridgepoint application, and that being such a hot topic for planning board consideration, the Chairman's comments and correspondence item was moved to later in the meeting, you know, in order to, you know, keep the focus and the priority on the application at hand. You know, a very significant application. And so I think it's just sort of remained there since that, since we've met our times of meeting since then. So that's changed. But I do, I do agree that whereas in number five, on our agenda, does have that little bullet point to the right saying public comment. It should, it should be, as you said, a distinct item as a public comment.
So it'd be a number six.
Or whatever the numbering system is. I don't know. But the thing I'd like to, the comment I'd made, and I made it in my note to you this morning, I really want to open up Chairman's comments and correspondence to Chair, Vice Chair, and Board members. You guys are quite active in thinking of stuff in the life of the town, and you guys might have items that you want to just mention to the board that don't fit into an agenda item of the evening, but, but you want to provide awareness or, or, you know, that I've been wondering about this issue or that, something that might be a planning board issue. So that's why I want to open up number, what we have right now is number five, to the entire board. And as, and that, and when we get to that point tonight, that's going to happen as I lead the meeting tonight. But I, for the future, I would like to have that possibility that it's not, that where it says comments, it's not restricted to the chair. Thoughts, feelings on that?
It's okay tonight, but I'm not saying it's not a.
When do you allow a board member to speak otherwise?
But you could, you could, yeah, or maybe at certain meetings or certain points, do something like under business or something like that.
If we have a busy agenda.
Oh, right. If the, I think the board knows if the agenda is really packed, that there's not going to be time or even attention, a level of attention to the point that they want to make. And I think, I think our board members are sensitive to that. I'm not, I'm not.
It depends on where you put it on the agenda. And how accounted, over the years, I suggested, instead of extra meetings to discuss things, right? That we have new business, do that to business, but new business towards the end of the agenda. That, that way, if someone wanted to talk about something or propose some new idea, you know, for ordinance or some letter we should write to our legislators, that would be the point in the meeting to do so. And after we've got all the business.
Right. I guess, I guess I'm reacting to calling it new business because I think if by saying a new business as a title, it, it, it doesn't seem as, that public, just having a comment on something is different than having a business item. You know, just like, hey, you know, I was wondering about this. Or, you know, in terms of planning, like, or a planning issue in town. That, you know, obviously, which is the scope of the work of the board.
What I suggest is keep it like that and do what you're going to do. Like ask board members, be running for a few months and see how it goes.
Exactly. So we can just, we can just sort of, you know, do a trial time of it and see how it runs. We don't have to legislate it tonight.
No, I know, I know. My preference is just to be towards the end and get the other work done first, and then have time for it.
Okay, having said all this, are there any more comments on 2023 R-01 Revised Item A on Resolutions? Could I have an approval, motion and second of this resolution with, with changes as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Simon, seconded by Alan, to approve with changes Resolution 2023 R-01 Revised. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody against, say nay. The resolution has passed. The next resolution we will look at is Resolution 2023 R-03 Revised. And it goes over the, pretty much the meeting times of the Planning Board. The gist of it is, the Planning Board of West Windsor Township shall meet on the first four Wednesdays of each month at 6:30 PM at West Windsor Township Community Municipal Building 271 Clarksville Road, unless otherwise noticed. Resolution shall take effect immediately. Any, any comments on this resolution?
I guess the idea of making the meeting earlier is just to get out of here earlier.
Well, we've all experienced how meetings can go, let me finish them. How meetings can go longer than we expect. Our goal is to end at 9:30, but it does allow a little space if we need to go over to, in order to transact business and not carry over. So I think, I think, I think it's a good cushion. And that it seems like in the poll of the members by our staff that it doesn't, no, nope, current planning board member is inconvenienced by the time change. Is that correct, Sam?
That's correct. And years ago, the meeting used to start at eight because most of the board members worked in the city, and when the trains came in and everything. So it was eight to 11 originally.
Right. Could I have a motion of approval for 2023 R-03 Revised?
So moved.
So it's moved by Simon, seconded by Pankaj, to approve 2023-R-03 Revised. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The resolution has passed. Our next resolution is File Number PB19-15 Amended Princeton Executive Park. This was the hotel and the site plan approval for the restaurant. This is, the site of this one is at the Meadow Road and Highway 1 Northbound, correct, Sam? Okay. Are there, are there items of corrections or edits for this resolution?
Just one.
And please refer to page number and item number as you speak. Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, the, oh, page, page seven, number 22, says no variance relief. It triggers by either increase, so it should be triggered.
Oh, so the verb change, triggers to triggered ED, correct?
Right. Yes.
Uh huh. Any other, any other corrections you have at this time? But as you.
Not, not.
Well, paragraph 21.
Same page.
Same page. There's a two, next to that's line, that should actually be 10, and incorrect. Copy that page, we're still going to make it to the board.
Okay, so it's 10 of the, the second line from the end of that paragraph, 10 of these spaces.
Right.
Is, that's the correction on that.
Wait, page 10.
No, page, item 21. Item 21. Second, just above where you had a correction from the second, where it says two, it's corrected to 10, spaces, second to last line of that paragraph 21.
State law for 10 of these EV spaces.
No, second, there's two on that line before, is that, should be two or 10?
That should be two.
Okay, that's so. So the sentence, partial sentence reads, "The applicant will receive credit under state law for two of these EV space, of these EV spaces, comma, 10 of these spaces already." Everyone with me on that? Any other, are there any other corrections to the, this resolution?
Yeah, the signature block, since Mike's not here, Jerry, if you can change that at the last page to put Curtis' name in there.
Could I have a motion of approval with corrections of this resolution?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve with corrections the resolution for File Number PB19-15 Amended Princeton Executive Park BLG West Windsor LLC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The resolution has passed. Our next resolution is Item D on your agenda under item number four. It's PB22-04 of Caden LLC for minor site plan approval. This was from the February 1st meeting. Are there any corrections to this, this resolution?
Last page again, Mike's name needs to come out. Curtis needs to come in.
May I have a motion of approval of this resolution, PB2204 Caden LLC?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, and seconded by Pankaj to approve the resolution for PB2204, 22-04 Caden LLC. All those in favor, say aye.
I abstain.
Okay, very good.
I abstain also.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, thank you for, you guys staying on top of that. The, the resolution is approved. The next item on our agenda is letter E, PB22-06 Princeton University Campus Operations Building. This is the nursery building that we looked at on February 15th. Are there any corrections to this resolution?
I have one correction on page 13. My name isn't listed in the West Windsor.
Okay. So, and Simon, you probably, you did approve it that night, yes? Yay. I mean, I'm filling out, yeah, I'm just filling it out.
I checked the minutes, the mayor, and he both approved, both their names in this.
And the mayor was the mayor, too.
And page two, one little typo. Second paragraph from the bottom, that 2.9 acre paragraph there. The 123, the fourth line says universe, university campus. It's just not spelled right. Just a little typo there.
Where are you again, Linda? Help me out, I'm sorry. University. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it, noted. Are there any other corrections to this resolution?
I just have one.
Go ahead, Alan.
I mean, it's unusual that we grant a waiver for lighting. And I was just wondering, you want to put a brief explanation in there? That a waiver had been granted because they are not used in the evening?
Sure.
So that people don't think we just wholesale give out, you know?
Where do you want to add this?
It would be the design waiver under A. Just a brief note indicating why that was granted.
Right, you want to, Jerry, what would be the wording that you want, so?
Basically, the facility is not used in the evening, therefore, the waivers for lighting should be granted.
Or daytime use only, or something like that?
Yeah. Whatever.
You good on that, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Are there any other corrections or additions of information that need to go into this resolution?
Just the last page again, Mike's name's out, Curtis, your name's in.
Might I have a motion for approval? Might I have a motion for approval with corrections for PB2206 Princeton, trustees of Princeton University Campus Operations Building?
So moved.
And seconded.
It's been moved by Simon, seconded by Alan, to approve with corrections PB2206 Princeton University Campus Operations Building. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Nay. The, the resolution has been approved. Great, 7:00 PM, good going. It's now time for item number five, chairman and planning board member comments and correspondence. This will be followed by public comment on non-agenda items with discussion on pending applications not permitted. Does any, oh, oh, I'm chairman, I should go first on this one, right? So I sent, I sent to you all a while ago, a New York Times article about parking lots and parking and how, how we just, generally, in this nation, we have a lot more parking than we actually need. And it's just come to my attention that we've had many applications during the last year where applicants have asked for additional parking. And I guess, having read the article, I'm now more sensitive to it, I guess, I want to, I want to be more, I'd like us, and I'm saying this to myself as well as us, I'd like us to be more inquiring and, and, and maybe just not take it face value that an applicant wants 10 to 15 to 20 additional parking spots, that we really, I really want stronger justification for the need for additional parking. And I'm just saying this as a blanket thing, I'm not trying to, I'm not signaling out a particular applicant, I'm just saying in general that this pattern of additional parking has come before us on many applications. And I'm kind of tired of it. So I just wanted to, okay, I'm bending on that, but I wanted, thought you might be interested in that.
I think it's a very good idea to question the applicant as to why, you know, I remember when AMC came into Hamilton, 24 Screen Theater, and they, they built to standards of Christmas time is what they thought they would need, and even at Christmas time, they never filled it. And as time went on, at least a third of that lot was just vacant asphalt. So you really, I think, have to inquire a little bit more, as you said, into certain applications. Certainly, restaurants have different needs than office buildings today. So I think you have to take that into consideration and definitely, you know, you might actually end up saving the applicant some money.
And with, with changing, with changing work patterns, you know, as, as we entered this post-pandemic time, and there's still, you know, hybrid situations of work or people, you know, not all coming to their work location, you know, the, the demand that I would imagine for parking is gone.
Just take a look at the train station.
Yeah.
I mean, Mondays and Fridays are the best days to find parking over there, because everybody's working during, you know, at home on those days, three days a week in. So, yeah.
I wonder, I appreciate, should look at, look at our codes on this, other applications with the foot candles and lighting and things like that have come up, and so I'm thinking like certain sections are all should at some point be reviewed because, yeah, you could start with parking, yeah.
Do another part of the council.
I mean, over the years, I've done so much of this work, a lot with the school work when I was on, because, you know, you have all these policies and different things and state guidelines and mandatory policy statutes approved and all this stuff, and so we never really review what we have in the code book, so maybe that's something to think about doing it that way, too.
Sam, as, as we go through the continuing process of master plan review, is there any upcoming elements that we haven't addressed where this would come up?
Now, we're working on historic preservation, conservation, and stormwater management.
So keep it in advance for a while until we can maybe deal with it again. Linda did bring up, Linda, you did bring up something that another, you did, your, your comments jogged my memory that on, it's been now a couple of applications, and I think even one before the zoning board, where the issue of light levels at intersections, I'm particularly thinking of the first time that the lake campus came through, Princeton University came through, and there was all this concern about that our light levels at, by mandate or by our code, you know, were, were less than what should have been needed or something, and really, as, as said by the applicant. But I, that's come up like two or three times, it's not just Princeton, it's come up a couple of times. So Sam, I'm wondering if, if, if that can be somehow addressed, somehow, some way, the, the issue of, you know, light levels in intersections.
It would be a change to the ordinance, that's something that, you know, staff could take a look at and make recommendations. We rely on Mr. Guzik in his office as a township engineer on whether or not he would support an increase or decrease in the foot candles that the current code requires.
Two weeks after you sent it, I forgot to send it to everybody, on Wall Street, there was an article, "America Has Too Much Parking."
I got it from, I got, I got a New York Times article, but it sounds like the Journal Wall Street.
This was the New York, I'll send it to everybody.
Thank you. My trouble with Wall Street Journal articles is there's paywall, you can send it to us without a paywall.
I have.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Pankaj.
I have the PDF, so.
That'd be great. Are there other, other board member comments that, open comments at this time?
Several years ago, the board worked on signage that never got adopted by Township Council. And I think one of the reasons it never got adopted was there was a section in that ordinance regarding portable signage. And if that section were removed from that ordinance, the Township Council would adopt it. That would save us from having to deal with signage, because then you have all the signage in that ordinance, and the applicant would have to, would have to ask for a waiver or something. How long have you all been? Oh my God, that must be.
That was a while ago.
Linda is the only current council member who was on the council when that ordinance was born.
Yeah, it's just it never got adopted. I just thought. I mean, I'm worried once you send to the council, it never dies, it just sits there. Yeah, so I can just pull it up and look at it.
Thank you, thank you, Simon. Are there any other general, general non-agenda comments on the minds? Okay, I'd like to open it up for a public comment on non-agenda items, or, and again, discussion of pending applications is not permitted. Does anyone of the public want to say their bit to the planning board of West Windsor Township?
Andrea Mandell, 46 Elworth Drive, West Windsor, New Jersey. I'm also the president of the West Windsor Town Council. Just one comment on the parking. If I remember correctly, there's a precise number that we have for parking, so we somehow come up that there has to be 242 and a half, or whatever it is, parking spots, and that number never exactly fits into whatever that lot looks like, whatever the need is. And so from my several years on the planning board, I think, I, I'm trying to remember if there ever was a time when we didn't even, didn't get asked for a few extra spots, or didn't get asked to bank some spots because there were too many. So if we're going to look at something as far as an ordinance, perhaps there should be something a little bit more flexible, and perhaps there could even be something in there where we lower a number, and then we say that they have to bank park, and then they can come back in, because I know we've done that on some applications, and that would give them, that would give an applicant the opportunity to put in a spot, put in a lower number of spots, and then realize perhaps that they don't need them, and that would save some pervious, impervious surface, and if they did need them, they would then be able to come back. So that's just a thought if we were to look at that. Now I'm going to take off my council president hat, just speak as a member of the public for, we were just talking about the public comment. I very much agree that we should be very specific on any particular agenda, where public comment is, if it's, if it's after chairman's comment, and that's number five, we should make it six, number public comment, or wherever, wherever it might be, it should be part of this list. I'm also a little, would suggest where we say public comment on non-agenda items, that's not always clear. For instance, there's an ordinance referral tonight under what Jerry said, that would not get a separate public comment, it's not clear, it's not clear whether there's going to be a separate public comment, for instance, on this particular subject. So instead of saying non-agenda items, perhaps we should say on non-hearing items, something a little bit more specific, because sometimes there are things on the agenda here that we don't have, like say somebody wanted to comment for whatever reason on a resolution, that's an agenda item, but there's no other place to comment, so presumably they would be permitted to comment during standard public comment, and then we should make it very clear on here, if there's going to be some kind of a separate public comment, then I would, I would expect that maybe we'd put that on here so people, it's, I'm trying to make it very clear to people when they can comment on anything they want to comment on, whether it's as part of regular public comment, or whether it's part of a hearing or something that is legally entitled to it. Does that make sense?
I, I understand your point, Andrea. It seems that inside an item, like a, say ordinance review like we're doing tonight, or an application review, even within the item, let's say, it's, it's not all spelled out, but there is like a sub-agenda within an item. Example, you know, applicant, applicant is before us, applicant, you know, says they've, they've done all the notifications they've done, you know, applicant makes the presentation, board members interact with the applicant as they make their presentation, then we have our, our staff respond to, on their area of specialty, to the application, then, as is pattern, we open it up for public comment. But it's not like we, we publish what I just said, such a standard sub-agenda, you know, we just say that, that, you know, the next item is application review of X, and we follow our pattern of review. So I think, my, my gut reaction would be, I think would be cumbersome to try to, to say that, but that, that, when people would know that, maybe, maybe it would need to be said upfront at the beginning of the meeting, that, yes, within the application, there will be opportunity for public comment.
I think the clearer, I think the clearer we make it, the better it is. I mean, I know when we do an ordinance at the council, we'll say public hearing, and then it gets opened up for a public hearing and closed for a public hearing, if it's an ordinance, but if it's just resolutions, other things like that, people can comment during public comment. So it's, whatever can be done to make it clear what, what should be done when, you know, when, when, what should go under public comment, what should, elsewhere, would just be helpful, I think.
Jerry, do you have any responses?
Before Jerry speaks, we have that outlined under Article 12 in the Policies and Procedures, which you just stated.
Okay. No, I was gonna say, how, how much of our public actually know of that document?
They don't know any, I don't think most, the average person.
That's my point, that's my point.
Or there could be some explanation that, you know, what, what can be discussed or something like that. But by saying non-agenda item, somebody might get the feeling that you can't discuss anything that's on this agenda, and then there would be the question, when can you discuss it? And that's.
Typically, the chairman would indicate when he opens up the hearing, that the public will be heard at the end of the applicant's discussion.
Yeah, that's for an application, that's easy. I'm talking about some of the other smaller things that don't have their own separate hearings, and I would assume that you would want to hear about most of that under public comment.
Yeah, I, I think we're trying, trying to say, when we have public hearing, I think the average person knows that they, there would be an opportunity for public comment on that. When you have something like this ordinance referral from Township Council, and we, we take public comment, but the average person doesn't know that.
Well, that's the beginning of the discussion, that's when the chairman makes that comment.
Right, but they won't even come. If they, if you just look at this agenda, as an average person, who doesn't know all the rules and the ins and outs, and has never attended any meetings and stuff, you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know that, that this discussion, you know, will include public comment. So if you just put, you know, public comment will be, will be taken as something, people would know, they could come and make it, otherwise, otherwise you wouldn't know.
You can have an asterisk next to the items.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't even know if you're going, I'm not even sure where to, like, is this going to be a separate public comment, or is this, people would get up now and comment on it?
Let's see, we say non-agenda items, but, but see, the ordinance referral, we take a public comment on that, then.
So you'll be taking that separate, so.
But we have an asterisk, we could, we could just indicate we'll take.
Right. It's like we've gotten in the country. The chair, at the beginning of the.
Yeah, I'd like it to be.
Right. Public comment, other item.
That, that would be fine, too. I mean, the, the public knows they can comment at some point.
Yes.
I just want to make it obvious.
Knows that.
Yeah, man.
But we need to verbally remind you.
Yeah, so I'm, that's like, for instance, if you're doing this next, and I say wanted to talk about that, which I don't, so if, if I wanted to talk about that, I wouldn't know whether to get up right now to talk about it, or whether to wait until you're talking about this and then ask separately. So that's something you should mention.
I think, I think the chair, the chair, in, in, the chair's opening remarks can make that clear, the times of public comment during the proceedings of the evening.
Right. And if that non-agenda word could be changed to something like non-hearing item or something, it might be a little less, little less hard to figure. And I think that was it.
Do you have any, any other items?
Well, I see you're doing a thing where members are commenting on items that are not on the agenda, which is what the new business type of items are at the council, and you probably would need to make it clear that this, since it's not on the agenda, that no decisions would be made on, at these types of discussions, that this is just a discussion for, for the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Andrea. Are there any other public comments at this time? Do we have to motion to close this session? Okay, it's just public comment, okay, very good. Okay, so now we're going to item number six, the, we've received from the Township Council an ordinance for review, the floodplain management regulations, ordinance 2023-03. Sam, do you want to do some, a summary of what our task is tonight on this?
Mr. Guzik is here, he's the one who wrote said ordinance, so he will be able to give you a discussion on that.
Yeah, and what, and what the jurisdiction of the board is, it's twofold. The main task is to determine whether the ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan. Board also can identify items that it thinks needs, should be eliminated, modified, or added.
Welcome, Francis.
My turn to comment?
You are.
Now, Francis, could I just mention one other thing? What I just said is a normal rule, but there, there's a wrinkle here, which is this is based upon a state template, so I don't know how many changes we can actually make.
Right.
If, if, if any.
Yeah, this, this is not the decision of the mayor of the council, this is created by the state managers and the rest in the law, makes sure everything was properly crossed and eyed out, and so this has been blessed with them, by them, and as Jerry said, our authority is kind of.
Right, and, and maybe that's a good place to start.
Right, and, and maybe that's a good place to start. So the latter half of last year, the clerk's office received a notice from the state office of dam safety and flood engineering, basically advising every town, including ours, that the federal emergency management agency FEMA had reviewed what DEP had been putting out as the New Jersey model flood damage prevention ordinance. And it recommended that the DEP revise it to ensure that all of the 553 participating community ordinances that were out there and in effect through the state complied with the National Flood Insurance Program standards. And they also, during the time of auditing that, as a result of Sandy and a lot of the damage that occurred, they had also been pushing to get the state to include stronger and more numerous references to the state building codes that are enforced by the local construction officials, just so that there wasn't some, some avenue where somebody is trying to do work in a floodplain and it's, they're either, an applicant is misled or misguided or some aspect of what they're doing is overlooked by one department zoning or engineering, but it's held up by the construction official or held up on the state level. So basically, it's a way of trying to get the, the federal standards, the state standards and the local standards all in harmony when it comes to these floodplain regulations. That being said, and hearing some of the, the comments that were being bandied about as we were working on this, in the memo that I sent up to administration when this was introduced, the, the March 15 memo, I, I wanted to specifically advise that this ordinance does not change any of the flood delineation standards or modify existing flood elevations. So if it was a floodplain today or yesterday or last year, it's going to be a floodplain after the standard. It doesn't get higher, it doesn't get lower, it doesn't move around. This talks about how the town is supposed to manage people who want to develop in and around these known floodplains. And if it's not known if it's a floodplain or a potential floodplain, then this also includes standards for how property owners are to determine that and delineate that to meet the state standards, but since they start at the local level, it's so that when we get it at the local level, it meets those state and federal standards on how it's delineated. So it also doesn't revise any of the model rainfalls or the storm events that are used to calculate stormwater runoff or flood levels. That was something else DEP was talking about, but that's a separate division of DEP, that's something that's still in the draft stage, have not received any guidance on if and when that's going to move further along at the state level. So that being said, I don't know exactly how you want to move through this productively, if you just want to open the questions.
I think, I think it'd be great if, if, at this point, Francis, you guide us through the ordinance and board members can ask questions of clarification or, or provide comment to certain sections of the ordinance as we go through, instead of, you know, just, you know, one person saying, I have a comment on page 15, and the next person says, I've got a comment on page 21. If you guide us through it and as board members have comments, provide them at the appropriate time when we get to that part of the ordinance. Y'all with me on that?
Sure, sure, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so go ahead, go ahead and guide us.
All right, so the, as was said earlier, this, this new section is basically based on the template provided to the township and something went through, reformatted and tried to reorganize so that it, it fits better into our code book and it's also more user-friendly for Sam and I and the construction official, who are actually going to do, deal with this on maybe not a day-to-day basis, but more so than anybody at the federal or the state level is going to deal with it. So the first section, section one of the ordinance is basically just repealing some of the definitions that are in the general land use definition section for those items that really are applicable only to the floodplain management areas. They, they basically have no other reference to any other part of the land use code. And the reason I'm removing them from here is because when we went through in 2016 and updated the flood management standards, because the state said we had to do it at that time, I added all these definitions in this section. And then with this change, all the ones you see crossed out, they had subtle changes to the wording in them. So rather than me trying to change them all here, knowing that they really don't affect any other land use code section, I thought it best to remove them from the general definitions. Not all of them are removed, as you'll see if you page through, some of them are still remaining, but that's because they have other references in other parts of the land use code. And the main reason, so that if the state at some time decides again that they don't like the way something's defined, or FEMA doesn't like the way something's defined, it's a much simpler revision in the future rather than crossing boundaries within the land use code.
So my question on this definitions section is, if you turn to page eight of Article 36, which goes into definitions immediately in the second bolded area, it, if, if we have within Article 36, the terminology and definitions there, is there any need to have a definition section at the front of this document? Example, you know, we, we, we have this historic structure in the first part of the definitions and yet we repeat that as part of this next section in Article 36. So I'm wondering if.
Well, it's left, it's left on page three because there are other references to historic structures and other parts of the land use code. So there is a need to have it in the general definitions for land use.
I guess I'm just confused why we have to have two sections of definitions. Why, 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 why do we have Article 36 and definitions?
Well, Article 36 is specific only to the floodplain regulations. It doesn't make reference to any of the other zoning standards or site plan standards or division standards. So any of the rest of Articles one through five of the land use code, I'm sorry, not articles, but what is it, parts one through five? Yeah, parts one through five of the land use code, where it talks about everything else that's in Sam's office, that you as the board have regulatory powers over for. That's why those definitions are left in this first part of this. When you get to page eight, the terminology there is specific only to verbiage used in the floodplain regulations section of the land use code. It's got a more, I guess, the better way of saying it is these definitions, starting on page eight, have a more narrow scope and applicability to certain aspects of land use, specific to floodplains, which is why they're only in there, rather than including them in the bigger section. And again, the, my selfish reason of doing it this way was if, again, DEP comes back and says, well, you need to change these five words in this definition, that we don't have to go back to the overarching land use code definition section and change it there, it's left just dealing in the specific floodplain section.
So in terms of process, we received this model, we received a model ordinance on, on floodplain management regulations from NJDEP, correct?
Yes, it's, it's a DEP.
And so, and so if, if the model ordinance has the section one definitions there, I would guess that they want them there throughout the state of New Jersey.
I'm sure that's part of there also.
What, if, if, if we're, if we're adopting, for the most part, the model ordinance with modifications as per specifically West Windsor Township, why not then keep them as, as they are stated here? Why, why the, why the, the, the big cut of them all if in the model ordinance, they had the reason for putting all these definitions up front?
I don't think they, this is part of the model ordinance, the sections under the definition.
No, no, section, section one is not part of the model ordinance.
Oh, that's, this was, was it specific?
Right.
Okay, I got you, I, I corrected, thank you. Okay, thank you, Alan. Yeah, okay. So that's why you can do, be more cut, cutting it than, because of the repeat. Okay, any other thoughts on, on definitions at this location?
None, okay. So moving on to page five is where the, section two of the ordinance is where the existing, what's called the flood damage and prevention ordinance today is, gets deleted in its entirety and these new floodplain management regulation standards come into effect. So as typical with, with any article or any, I'm sorry, ordinance like this, this, this part six, you start with Article 35, the scope and administration, why are you doing this, what is this all about, what's the purpose of this? So that's where these, section 270.1 through 270.9, basically explain the why of what these, this part six is doing.
And that's from the state DEP?
Yeah, pretty much everything here is per the state template. Most of what I did was get it into a format, like calling it part six, calling it Article 35, giving it a section number of 200-270.1, was to get their language to fit into our standards, so that it blends into our ordinance better. One of the things I was specific to do in, on page seven, in 200-270.9, was to point out that these regulations aren't intended to supersede or establish regulations that aren't in effect in other parts of our land use code. Because there, there are references to manufactured homes, there are references to some other things that aren't permitted by some of our zoning district standards. So we didn't want to set up a conflict where by having it in here, someone's led to believe that, oh, I can do a, a trailer park development because it's listed in the floodplain regulations, even though it's not listed anywhere in any of the zoning districts. So this is specific to point out that this is just in the case that those zoning district standards are changed by someone at some point in the future to allow some of these things and someone wants to do that type of development in a floodplain area, this is the standards they would have to follow, so.
Any other comments on Article 35? See to Article 36 terminology?
Yeah, this, this one's pretty self-explanatory, these are all the definitions they want us to include and the way they want us to include them. There are a lot more references in this version to the other standards that are out there, like you'll see at the beginning under 271.1, the reference to the American Society of Civil Engineers, the, the reference to FEMA and, and what some of these standards are. That's because as you go through this, there's a lot more cross-reference than in the current part six to these other standards, which is what the purpose FEMA and the DEP want to accomplish by having us do this, that anybody going through at the local level thinking, well, let me see what the town requires first, they're going to be hit in the face with, oh, I need to meet civil engineering standards, I need to meet FEMA standards, I need to, so there, there's a sense of, at the get-go of how complicated a process this would be
So all of the definitions that you have going up through page 19, they're all mandated by?
Yeah, page through page 20, actually, yeah, they're, they're basically all the, the words and, and format per the template. The next article, starting on page 20, deals with how the township requires you to establish the flood hazard areas, what basically spells out what reference there are available. It gives room for adding in additional information, if additional studies get done by somebody. And it also explains what, what a property owner is supposed to do if they have property that they believe is in the floodplain, that's not in one of these known studies that are out there. Again, other than the info tables, information in the tables is township-specific for what maps apply to West Windsor Township, for the streams that are in West Windsor Township. All the rest of the language is per the state template.
Fran, I had a question about your, your table on page 23. I noticed that there were two duplicates toward the top, as Bear Brook, Big Bear Rock is listed twice, and Acapulco Creek, Bright Run is listed twice with the same information. So is that a duplicate or is that something that's unique?
Oh, that's, that's a duplicate.
So those should be removed?
Uh, right, the duplicates can be removed.
Can be removed, okay.
So looking at the second column on page 23, there is a duplicate of the last four digits, zero, 20, 18?
Correct.
And what's the other one, Simon?
That's coming up.
Zero, 20, 21. So one of the, one of the 18ths and one of the 21ths is removed as the line item. Y'all with me on that?
And the other, the only other question I had on the document, Fran, is it asks or it talks about a floodplain that did a scare to the township? I was just wondering who that person might be.
It's the gentleman sitting across the table from me.
Article 38 designates me.
Oh, that's you.
Another half, another half.
Another half, another half person, okay.
Except, except it's wet.
Right, that's the very next article, starting on page 25. But of course, it also allows Sam or any of the floodplain administrator, administrator, if this is ever changed, to use other technical staff available in the township, including the township engineer, the construction official, so that he's not left out to dry if.
He's not inundated by.
Right. So, so again, a lot of this, in this, this. So again, a lot of this, uh, in this, this article, um, again, it's all per this. Uh, talks about what, what information he's, what is looking for, record-keeping requirements. So.
And this is standards throughout New Jersey now?
Right. Right, basically, anybody anywhere in the state by the middle soup, our timely option would know what to expect if they're encountering this because every town's going to have this language in their, in their code book.
Francis, quick question. Um, it was my understanding that if this is not adopted here and elsewhere, that municipality that's in the national flood insurance program will no longer be eligible for the program, correct?
That was the hammer that FEMA and DEP were using.
Yeah.
To threaten, um, non-action or courage. Okay. Motivate, that's the motivation stick.
Now, if a municipality is not in the national flood insurance program, do they have to adopt this anyway? It sounds like they do.
Uh, if it's, it's more so for the benefit of any property owners that have insurance because it affects those property owners and the rates that they would pay. So it, it's really more them that the town should be worrying about than, than themselves. And to their credit, the people we've been liaising with for FEMA and the DEP have been flexible with understanding, um, everything that we're going through here at the town and have been giving us extensions, just as long as we keep them informed of where we are in the process. So. Uh, moving on on page seventy, next article is about permits, uh, what type of?
Page thirty.
Page thirty. About the need for the, the permits, what type of information needs to be on a permit, how long they're valid for. And gives the floodplain administrator the authorization to suspend or revoke a permit. If, uh, new information comes to light that renders the previous or any information used in, in granting the permit, uh, incomplete or inaccurate. With no questions, the next article, starting on page thirty-one, is about more detail on the required information for anybody who's proposing development in a flood hazard area. Uh, what types of studies, maps, certifications they need to provide to the township.
Sam, do you have an idea how often we get applications for a flood hazard area?
For development in a flood hazard area, no, we don't at all. But for residential homeowners who want to put additions on their homes and so forth, we do get that.
Yeah, and that's, uh, I guess that's worth a comment. That's one of the decisions that went into crafting this ordinance because when the state sent the template over to us, they had some language in there that, that was more restrictive than, um, they could require. And it was suggested as a township, but maybe we want to consider adopting it. Um, but in the end, realizing that a lot of it would be punitive to the residential property owners who have homes, um, in or around a floodplain area, uh, would, would again be more expensive or problematic for them as, as time went on. An example of that is that when, um, after, after damage occurs, uh, to a property, there is a market value, uh, cost analysis that has to be done for the present value prior to damage in the value, value of the work. And if it, I believe if it's fifty percent or greater to, to rehab the home, then it's expected and mandated that the home has to be completely revised and rebuilt to meet current flood standards. You can't, you can't just fix it the way it was. You have to meet the current standard, which is at least raising it to a foot above the flood hazard elevation. So. Right. And, and some of the suggested language in the template was that, uh, the township have a time span that they could implement for that prior damage value to stay considered by a homeowner. So instead of just on a storm-by-storm basis, we could set a range of ten years or twenty years. So that maybe twenty years ago, when you had damage, it wasn't enough to trigger you to have to raise your home. But because of a storm that happened fifteen years later and the combined value of those two things, even though this recent storm may have been, you know, minor damage, the, the combined value of the two now caused you to incur significant expense or, you know, vacate the property because you can't afford to raise your home a foot. So, um, after discussions internally and with administration and the mayor, that we didn't want to be that punitive to, to the property owners because number one, we didn't have, uh, an extensive amount of properties in the township that are at risk for that, but the ones that we do, we did not want to be, um, punitive for them. So.
Any other thoughts on article forty? Article forty-one inspections?
Yeah, inspections, beginning on page thirty-three. Uh, again, it's one of the shorter ones. It, it just follows a template that if you're doing, um, any of these types of construction, then it spells out what you need inspections for, what will be looked for. Relatively simple. Next section on page thirty-four, uh, forty-two variances. Um, this one is more lengthy and a lot more elaborate in what it requires. Uh, you as a township planning board would be the one to have jurisdiction on anybody seeking a variance from any of the standards in this part six, um, to be able to proceed with development that doesn't otherwise comply with these standards. And, um, it talks about what types of things should be considered uh, by an applicant who is thinking of doing that, coming to the board, and also what you as the board member should be considering as you're evaluating somebody's request to try to do development in these areas. Uh, next article, starting on page thirty-six, violations. Uh, talks about what, what powers the, um, floodplain administrator uh, has in issuing noted violations um, and repeat repeat violators. Again, this is, this is all per the, the template.
Hey, I'm going to go back one moment. Um, we're on variances. So, uh, Sam, scenario, um, an application, uh, an applicant comes before us to, to, to us, the planning board, to request a variance in regards to this ordinance. Would, it's not like I'm going to know from the top of my head all the considerations that two seven seven point five. Would it be, would, uh, would it be who you do to get these considerations back to the board if we were to consider a variance? No, you should look at, you should be mindful of whatever.
Well, typically, like with any development application, uh, it would go to the TRC first, the technical review committee. There would be reports done and there would be an additional report that deals with any variance requests for this section of the code.
Okay, so TRC would be engaged if there's that.
Correct. Plus we have other ordinance. There's the environmental constraints ordinance where floodplain areas and wetlands and so forth, excluding buffers, are calculated against your permitted density on a property. So.
Okay. No, thanks. I couldn't, uh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Think you're up to forty-four.
Forty-four, starting, starting on page thirty-seven. Uh, this is where it starts getting into the specifics for the different type of development that can occur from or minor encroachments into a floodway, uh, what's permitted or not permitted. And depending on what those encroachments are for, there are standards, uh, whether they're for waste order slash sewer facility, storm drainage, uh, placement of fill, recreation vehicles, tanks retaining walls, swimming pools, fences. So. Just based on a case-by-case basis, what, what standards people are expected to meet. And that, that spills over into the next article, uh, forty-five for actual habitable structures and other buildings. So again, on a case by case basis of what type of building it is, whether it's habitable, whether it's a garage or accessory structure, manufactured home, uh, utility, uh, use building. And again, these, these are all basically per the, uh, for the guidelines, uh, the template. Some of this, if you were to look at the template compared to this latter half of the ordinance, uh, this part, I did a little reorganization to try to cluster things together. That made sense. For some reason, the state had things spread out. They didn't always agree from section to section. And again, if, if Sam or I or the construction official or somebody in our absence had to reference this to try to figure something out, it's more practical to have everything applicable to that one topic all in the same section. And so that would be one minor, uh, difference you would see comparing the template to this latter half. And from, from the end of that, uh, the forty-six on page forty-three just gets to temporary structures and temporary storage, uh, which were the last few things that had to be covered in the template. And you'll note in, in that article, there are time limits to what is quote-unquote temporary. You know, it's not considered temporary just because it's not permanent. It's temporary for a limited amount of time. And if there's no questions or comments on that, the, the latter sections of the ordinance now, starting on page forty-four, section three, section four, section five, and section six are really just changing the title of this part six from flood damage and prevention to floodplain management regulations, where part six is referenced in different sections of the land use ordinance, just so it's not conflicting. Believe it or not, that took a lot of explaining to DEP. They didn't understand why I had to do this, why we couldn't have conflicting titles in other sections of our code. They wanted me to do that in a different ordinance. Yeah, so.
Amazing, silly question.
Yes.
On section nine, last page, it says that this ordinance shall take effect twenty days after action or inaction by mayor as approved by law or in override. I don't understand that part.
That's just procedurally how an ordinance gets, uh, approved by council and adopted. And then the mayor has veto power. So if he doesn't do anything, it's considered approved and carried.
Okay.
And if he vetoes it, then what it says there.
Then everybody has twenty days. Anybody can appeal that.
Right.
Right? So it doesn't come to the flex of a day.
Right, before it goes into effect.
And that's boilerplate. That's not just for this ordinance.
Correct, right.
Does, uh, the planning board have any more input, uh, to Francis on, uh, this ordinance? So, um, Jerry, the nature of the motion by the planning board is we, we do not approve this. We pass it on to the council for their approval. That, that we've completed our review. Help me with language for a motion.
Correct.
Well, help me with the motion.
I mean, what the board usually does is find that the, um, the ordinance is in compliance with the master plan and that there are no changes that it proposes.
Just the, the table, the duplications in the table.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So Jerry, in your memorandum tomorrow to the clerk, you need to specify the two minor changes that Simon had brought.
So, would you like a motion?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion that this ordinance is in compliance with the master plan as it basically supports the objectives of the municipal land use law with regard to the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens of this community. And we pass it, I would say that we're passing it on to the, um, to the council.
As if, with the as amended word in there somewhere, right? Because we need to make it a minute. Uh, thank you, Simon. Uh, it's been moved, uh, by Alan, seconded by Simon to, uh, that, that this ordinance is in compliance with the master plan and to pass it on for, uh, action by township council. Uh, with, uh, corrections. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. All those who disapprove, say nay. On something like this, do we need a, a, a person by a roll call vote or, or, or is this good, or is that good enough? Help me out. Yeah, thank you. Do, do I need a roll call? Okay, uh, we will re, we will retract the, that, the vote that just took place and we will do a roll call vote. Oh, stop! Is there public comment on this? I'm sorry, I'm bad. Is there any more public comment on this, this ordinance? Thank you, thank you. Forgive me, folks. Okay. Yeah, I'm only the vice chair. I'm still learning how to do this job. Thanks for forbearing with me. Um, uh, oh, can we have a roll call on? Did you guys, are you guys, you guys are good? I know, I did, I did. You guys are good, uh, you guys are good. Allison, you're good. Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, what? I know, I'm, I'm getting with it. I'm tired. Oh, can we have a roll call vote, please, on, on this, uh, ordinance?
Mr. Patel?
No, we're not, no, one sec, one sec. Mayor has corrected me. Uh, could I have a motion to close the public comment on this? Okay, you did. Okay, okay. All those in favor, that, this can be a, a, not a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Uh, public comment is closed for this ordinance review. Uh, could we please have a roll call vote on the ordinance motion?
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Laverre?
Mr. Laverro? Mr. Schichtel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes. And Francis, thank you for all your diligent work on on this. Sam, could you go over the agenda for next week? And I'd like us to be able to, if you're able to tonight, to tell Sam that you can make this meeting or not. Please respond. Go ahead, for April 19th.
Annis, Alan, and Jodico were the only three members had indicated to me they will not make next week. So we will have a quorum if the rest of the board members do show up on that. That's the package that's left for everyone here with the agenda for next week. That's the application we're going to hear.
Is there any other board members at this time that they do not think they can make April 19th? Okay, so that our next meeting is on April 19th. Is there any other business before the board tonight? Could I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Linda, seconded by Mayor. Thank you, to dismiss the meeting. We are adjourned.